I'd like to reconvene the June 18, 2014 Town Council meeting. Next on the agenda will be general public comments. I'll be, actually, I'd like to hear from people here that want to talk about something other than what's on for orders. So Benjamin Farm will be coming up under Old Business. So if you'd like to make general public comments, three minutes. Name and address, please. Anyone want to talk about anything other than the Benjamin Farm? Okay, I'll close as public, general public comments, minutes of June 4 meeting. Any approvals?
Second.
Any errands or omissions? None, all those in favor? Opposed? None. Adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, the council needs to adopt the school budget resolutions, which is a state requirement. It's also part of the school budget validation referendum. This would be the last order on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Okay, treasurer's warrants are here, I'll be signing those.
Order number 1454 is a 7:00 PM public hearing on the proposed changes to 601, the town of Scarborough traffic ordinance.
Okay, any from the, anyone from the public like to speak on chapter 601 changes to the traffic ordinance? Anyone here? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
The second reading will be held on July 16.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Under Old Business, order number 1455 is the second reading to approve the expenditure in an amount not to exceed $2 million from the land acquisition reserve fund for the purpose of purchasing the so-called Benjamin Farm, located more specifically identified by the Scarborough tax process map, 95 lots 5A, 6, and 10, and as recommended by the Parks and Conservation Land Board and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents as are necessary to protect the town's interests.
Okay, I'll start with a public hearing, I mean, hearing from the public. Anyone that'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, name and address, please, on the Benjamin Farm.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Anson. I live at 1 Haystack Circle, which is very close to Benjamin Farm. I would encourage the Scarborough Town Council to support Scarborough Land Trust's application to the land bond to purchase the Benjamin Farm. I've spoken to neighbors about this project, and they've all said that they've been wondering for years and holding their breath, hoping that something could be done to save Benjamin Farm. Well, we're here right now with that opportunity. When I think about this project, I'm so excited by the huge number of people who would benefit from conserving Benjamin Farm. Benjamin Farm is the only large unprotected piece of land in the most densely developed part of town. I think of the adults who would like to go for a walk when they come home from work, they'd like to get out into nature, but they don't have time to drive across town to go to another land trust trail before dinner. Mostly, though, I think of the kids nearby. As of today, it's officially summer vacation. Don't we want our children to have great nearby opportunities to get out and explore nature? Don't we want them to enjoy being active outdoors? I know a lot of us grew up that way, but each generation sees kids spending less and less time outdoors. My parents and their generation spent their summer days entirely outside, going who knows where. They'd return home at night, hopefully in time for dinner. When I was growing up, I played with my neighbors outside in my small contained neighborhood, and I checked in with my mom if I wanted to eat lunch at a friend's house. Even since then, things have changed drastically, especially with the prevalence of electronics. Screen time just wasn't a term when I was growing up, which wasn't that long ago. We know getting outside and experiencing nature is good for kids and adults alike. Time spent in nature keeps kids healthy, lessens stress, and even makes them smarter. Pleasant Hill School is less than a mile away from Benjamin Farm. Think of the educational opportunities in this convenient outdoor classroom. The Benjamin Farm is one of those unique places in Scarborough. Scarborough has always been known as a rural town. You can look at nearby cities, Portland, Saco, and Bedeford, they have long histories of industry and commerce with historic downtowns and riverside mills. Scarborough simply doesn't have this type of heritage, but it does have its own. Scarborough historically was known for shipbuilding, fishing, and farming. Benjamin Farm offers the last opportunity to preserve a farm in the Pleasant Hill neighborhood, an area once known for farming, but an area that would not have any farms left if Benjamin Farm was lost. I think we need to not only understand and appreciate this farming history, but celebrate it. We're proud of our farming past in Scarborough, and we want to stay connected with the Scarborough that existed before we lived here. I don't want to live in a town where 10 years from now, I look around and all the recognizable landmarks are gone. We need to carefully select the land that is worth conserving and work to make it happen. Benjamin Farm is that property for Scarborough. I think of the land bond application for $2 million as not simply an expenditure, but as an investment. We have to think about what can we do to improve our town? What can we do to make Scarborough a better place to live? This is not just an item on a budget that must be approved every year, this is a one-time upfront investment in your community. $2 million is a lot of money, but looking at the costs avoided by purchasing the land, it will pay itself off over the years. And then there are the tremendous benefits to the public of Scarborough. This should be a no-brainer. The beauty of Benjamin Farm is that once we purchase it, it will be there forever. That means you, your kids, your grandchildren can all go there for recreation whenever you want, but so can countless generations beyond that. That's the beauty of a land trust. Scarborough Land Trust preserves land for people and for wildlife forever. Thank you, and I would urge you to support the community by approving the land bond.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, this is Suzanne Foley Ferguson. Is it, this is the public hearing, you don't have them on two separate agenda items, but so this is both the public hearing and the second reading?
It only requires the first and second reading.
What's that?
It only requires the first and second reading.
Okay, so you're just doing, that's, okay, that's good. I'm the chair of the Parks and Conservation Land Board, and I just, for folks that are here from the land board, or from the public that don't know, we've been, the town, the citizens have already approved this money. Three times we voted, and the council's aware of this, that three times that the citizens have voted to spend money. The Benjamin Farm, during our first land bond, the Benjamin Farm was on everybody's radar. We knew way back in the 2000s that this was a property in the heart of the town that we would really, really want. Unfortunately, it was very, very difficult, 13 years of negotiation, and the land trust has done a great job of that. And we at the, in the land board, while we're supposed to be objective, I will say that every time a project came before us, we thought, oh geez, is this going to eliminate the fund? Because what if the Benjamin Farm comes up? We always were afraid to say, yeah, yeah, fund this project, because, oh gosh, are we going to have enough money if the Ben, if and when the Benjamin Farm comes up? So you should know that the Benjamin Farm scored the second highest of all the land that we've ever evaluated, and that includes current town lands such as Tibbetts Road, which is a beautiful piece of property. The sec, if it was a working farm, it would have scored even higher. So we wholeheartedly support this project, it's a great project, we're here for questions and photographs if people want, from the council would like to see anymore or have any more questions. But we wholeheartedly support the $2 million. We know it's, it's a tough amount in this tough time, it does leave 400,000 at least, plus or minus, in the account for future purchases, and we think that citizens of the community have supported the land, and this is the exact kind of property that we want to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, my name is Dan Brzeo. My address is 6 Indian Rock Road, just off Pleasant Hill. My wife and I just recently moved to Scarborough from Buffalo, New York. We accepted positions at the University of New England's Portland campus where we're professors, and I can make this fairly quick, which will stun my students, but basically, when we decided to come to Maine and to Portland, we looked at many, many homes in the Portland area, not only here in Scarborough, but just about everywhere, including Portland itself, and we ultimately decided on the home we have here in Scarborough. And one of the major factors in that decision was the fact that this was such a pleasant rural community with lots of open space, lots of parks, and beaches, that was very easy to get in and out of Portland, too. And so I would just strongly encourage that this purchase be made, because this is a significant piece of land, and will go a long way to keeping Scarborough the sort of place that ultimately affected our decision.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I know that each of you serve on the Town Council because of your personal commitment to this town, both individually and as a group. And one of the most difficult things for the Town Council and for all of us is to have time for future vision, while we're dealing primarily with the incidences of the current and the present. And one of the hallmarks of leadership is vision, and I know each of you serve in this capacity in part because of your strength of vision in the town, and as other speakers have alluded to, people live in Scarborough to a large degree because they like our history. They like the fact that this is an outdoor-oriented town. They like the fact that this is a town that intersperses clusters of housing with beautiful natural and open spaces. And I urge you to use the vision that you possess to go forward with this particular proposal. Additionally, the importance of funding it fully, up to the $2 million mark, is critical because other funding modalities that would have to take the place of that would require outsiders to contribute the money. And with that come strings and conditions, be they from state organizations or national organizations. And again, one of the things that we tend to value locally in Scarborough is our ability to control our own destiny. And by funding this locally and keeping it for ourselves to manage within our community, we then hold the vision for our own future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi, Richard.
Hi. Eric Knott, 19 Williamsburg Lane. I'm a fourth-generation Scarborough resident. The fifth generation is tearing up outside here. You and I, Richard, have gone to school together, we've seen land in this town go quick, big parcels. This is an opportunity to secure a premier spot that we'll never see again in our lifetime. Our children will never see this again, ever. If we don't get this now, at the full amount, we could lose it forever, just like a lot of pieces we've lost over the years. My suggestion's to the board, we need to fund this at full, $2 million, and get it done with. And I think everyone here agrees with that. So I would hope that we could get this done tonight, and then move on and save this land. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close. And do I have a motion? Counsel discussion. Who wants to be, go first.
Well, I have the amendment to offer.
Counsel Holbrook.
Each of you who's received in front of you tonight a handout from Town Manager, that would be to, so my motion is to replace the current order with the order as you see it written in front of you for this evening. If there's a second, Tom, we'll talk a little bit about what that changes.
Okay.
Okay, we have an amendment, a second.
Yes, partially in response to questions and some concerns raised by members of council at your last meeting and the intervening days, and also a recognition that the order as was passed in first reading probably wasn't thorough enough, and didn't fully articulate some of the details, and frankly, we don't know all those details. But I've been involved in, I think, three of these similar closings, and there's always a flurry of activity leading up to closing to make sure the town's interests are properly protected going forward. We've tried to, and the effect of this motion does several things. Essentially, it authorizes me to sign documents, it doesn't exactly say what they'll, what they are, that peace will develop over time, but those documents that we deem necessary to protect, preserve, and secure the town's interests. That may take shape by way of conservation easement or covenants, there's any number of ways to do that, but using significant public funds, I think it only stands to reason that the town should maintain some level of interest in the property. Again, that's not dissimilar from what we've done in the past, I just think it's healthy to articulate it here as part of your authorization. The other portion of it speaks to the issue of kind of the ongoing efforts. There are fundraising commitments that have been made by the land trust, there's also any number of other opportunities, some have been explored and fully explored, others might come up between now and closing. There is a fair amount of time between now and the end of the year, and the other part of this amendment really encourages the land trust not to give up on those efforts, to further leverage local monies, and to the extent that you're successful beyond your commitment of the fundraising, that those go back to the land bond fund so they can be again used for another project for another day. So that's a, quite a wordy summary, if you will, but that's the intent of this, of these changes. I do have a few copies, if anyone wants to see that, I distributed that to the council. I should also mention that I have worked with two members of the land trust directly, I believe they're both here, they can speak for themselves, but I, I think I offer these with their blessing, Jeremy's nodding at me.
Okay, with that, is there any discussions on the amendment? Counsel attorney?
As someone who grew up in South Portland, next to Scarborough, I'm thrilled to be able to preserve this land. I've driven by there my whole life, I saw over time how Pleasant Hill kept growing, growing, and growing, and I watched in dismay as the barn fell down, that beautiful brick barn. However, I feel very strongly that we have an opportunity here to preserve the largest piece of land that's on this side of Route 1, and as one speaker mentioned, this is not an expenditure, it's an investment. It's an investment in our future, and I hate, I'd hate to be around 100 years from now and have that all changed. So anyway, that's where I come from with this. I support this.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Counsel Donovan.
Just speaking, just to the amendment, I think it's important, protective language to allow the town the ability to pursue this bond funding project in a manner that protects the town's interests, and so I think it's quite appropriate to support the amendment.
Okay, seeing no one else? Okay, the amendment to the main motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Passed. Back to the main motion, discussion.
Oh, don't everybody jump up and down. I'll go. It's not all right. So, in a show, like, so the amendment just protected the town's interests a little bit. It does become a little bit problematic where, and I mean no disrespect to the land trust, but it is a private entity, so this again secures the interests of the town a little bit further, so that there's some protection and perpetuity, that, you know, this isn't going to get sold later, or if something happens and the trust is dissolved, that, you know, this stays within the confines of the town. As I mentioned before, at the last meeting, my concern wasn't so much, I, again, I fully support preserving Benjamin Farm, I fully support the concept of, you know, it saves money in the long run, it's, you know, let's face it, it's Pleasant Hill, it's high-density building, you'd have a kid factory being built up there. So, you know, I did, you know, understand that the concept of, what I do like of this is that it does open up the opportunity that not only can the land trust also have some opportunity to try to pursue more funds, that we as a town have some opportunity to try to maybe help you do that, to secure those funds. Like I said, you know, I do support, supporting the, buying the purchase of the Benjamin Farm, and again, my comments at the last meeting, it was just more to do with, I have no confidence that a land bond at this point in time would pass in front of the voter, and I do appreciate it's, it was passed three times, but it certainly was, you know, a different economic climate, so again, you know, very carefully picking and choosing. Land is important, and once it's gone, it is gone, but I do also want to point out, Scarborough, Maine is the largest freshwater marsh in the entire eastern seaboard. So we have substantial amounts of land, that, and again, I don't dispute that Benjamin Farm isn't a worthy purchase, and I support the $2 million, but there's that other piece, which is what I was talking about. As we lose the land, we've also lost the monuments, the sites, the structures. Benjamin Farm, and as you may or may not know, I've been involved with Historic Preservation Committee. Benjamin Farm was on the initial shortlist, but because there's nothing of value left of the structures, it's no longer meeting the criteria to make the list. So that was my point. As we're moving forward, what little funds are left, knowing that this is what we have, we also need to keep our eye on that other second, secondary piece. So again, hopefully, I do, you know, I support the $2 million, I hope you raise the other 500,000, I hope there's something that we can do to help you secure even maybe a little more, and I guess that's my comments at that.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan.
This is, I see this as a great win-win situation. It's obviously a fabulous property to conserve, unique and particularly in its geographic location within the community, and therefore, in one of the most densely populated portions of our community, we will add a large tract to other tracts that, abut it, that are in conservancy state. So that, that's wonderful. I think from a responsible expenditure of money, this, in the long run, saves tax dollars, and the case has been made in the materials that have been submitted to us. So I think that, that's a terrific part of it. I conferred with Scarborough Land Trust members and the town manager to understand the prospects for additional funding, and timing is everything. You know, the chances here now to acquire this property, you can't always also get all of the funding opportunities to line up perfectly. And so the language that was proposed and presented for amendment allows us more flexibility, and that's, that's important, because we do want to try to avail ourselves of any opportunity that comes along, and those may be post-closing. And therefore, the ones that were identified as potentially available in the future convince me that, that going for the whole $2 million at this point is prudent, it is not using up all the funds, but that there are going to be opportunities for replenishment that we can't necessarily identify this minute, but that they have a realistic chance of presenting themselves. And so under those circumstances, as I've been educated in understanding this process and the long trail to get to where we are, through the Scarborough Land Trust, decade and a half of effort, then I think this, the prudent thing for our town to do is to approve the $2 million.
Thank you. Counsel Lee, I think was next.
I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Benjamin a number of years ago. I had a friend that used to go up to the farm and feed the cows with him, and I went up there one day, and Mr. Benjamin was a wonderful person. He had a vision for the farm, he loved the farm. He told me how he had purchased it, and the story is amazing, but I'm not going to even get into it, but I'm sure a lot of you people know, he just drove by, and it was for sale, and he just made an offer, and he bought it like in five minutes.
Fifteen years, five.
But he loved that land, and I think a lot of people that live in the Pleasant Hill area love that land, and I'm dying to get out there and explore it, like I'm sure a lot of people are. This is a no-brainer. This is something that we have to, and I'm going to support it wholeheartedly.
Like you're spending $2 million.
The vote is approved.
Counselor Benedict.
I guess the main thing I want to say is that, I've said it a couple of times this year, there's nothing worse than being a Monday morning quarterback. You have to get on opportunities, you just kick yourself in the butt, saying, why didn't I, why didn't I? And this has been on the map, 14, 15 years, and I'm certainly glad that the land trust have the opportunity to look at it, to equate it, and to move on it. Between that and the other end of it, is the money has already been appropriated, so it's not, it's not a matter of money, it's a matter of retaining what the town has, the ability to buy the money already made for, and as Ed said, it's really a no-brainer. I'll be supporting it.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm definitely supporting it, and one of the reasons why is I feel the voters of the town of Scarborough voted for the bond, and it was overwhelming. We voted for a school, we, building the school, we voted for a new ladder truck, we, we went forward and bought that. Now, it's, I think it's up to the council to be the best judge of what lands are purchased. The land trust does a great job, but still the public entrusts us to help in those decisions, and I think it's, is a great decision, it'd be a great purchase. I knew Mr. Benjamin also, I helped him out a lot, helped him fix his equipment, I helped him do some of the, away from the farm farming, to, and I miss, I miss, you know, talking to him. He was a great guy, but before him, I remember when I was a kid, it was, I believe it was referred to as a Robinson farm, and it's too bad to have seen the buildings go the way they did, but in, in talking with Counselor Holbrook, you know, in the future, we're going to try to preserve some of these landmarks in Scarborough, some of these old farms. We've seen, as a kid here in Scarborough, I've seen a lot of beautiful buildings be demolished, even right in this local area, right here. There was two beautiful houses here, one beautiful barn and a house right where El Rayo's going now. It was a beautiful place, and it was a shame to see it go. So this is very important, I think it's very important to a lot of people in Scarborough, a lot of people that lived here for generations. So I'm definitely supporting this, and I'm very happy that this is taking place, and it's been a long time, we've talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. And one of the things Counselor Donovan said, I always was saying, you know, we keep taking this property out of, you know, out of the tax rolls, but the land trust did a good job, I think, of presenting what the impact is when the land's built on, the impact to the town. So I think this is a great way to save property and save expenditures for the town, so I'm definitely in favor of it. Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor? All those in favor? opposed?
None.
Well, that feels good after eight months. I guess we did something, right? Yeah, I'll take a couple of minutes recess. If anyone here would like to leave now, they can, or they can stay for the rest of the meeting.
We sat next to each other down. I, I saw you in the audience, and I couldn't put your face to the name. Thank you.
You were all nervous.
You got a minute.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Oh, you're such a bother. Family, is that what you're saying?
Uh, I grew up here. But I was...
No, I, I was...
You better cherish it, because I don't know if I'll ever get it.
I know.
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 That complex and that could be a transition type area with proper utilities. And then to the south, you'll see closer to Holmes Road, the committee's proposing an RF district for that particular area because it's quite distant from future water sewer extension. It's pretty isolated from the rest of this area, given the None Such River breaks the golf course in half from the front nine to the back. And is really more, it's pretty wet, so it's more conducive to some residential development that could happen along the golf course. So, that's the zoning map component of your agenda. And the zoning ordinance amendments are really kind of tailoring the current running hill zones and for use in this area. The running hill zones are set up for the running hill area. And so, there's a bit of broadening that happened by Long Range Planning Committee so it could apply to this area and meet the goals for this area. There aren't major changes, but there are adjustments like setbacks to the street for Gorham Road, like setbacks to, in buffering to some neighboring rural properties and so that there isn't development that occurs right up next to a rural and farm property or a single-family house that has two acres. So, those are the type of amendments that are in the zoning ordinance amendment section of proposal before you. The other component of the zoning ordinance amendments are to the conservation subdivision standards. Those are standards that enable, in many cases require, in the rural zone, smaller single-family house lots in exchange for preserving wetlands. So clustering so that development can occur on, say, fifty percent of the land, the other fifty percent can be conserved for wetland preservation and the like. We looked at these standards and given the existence of the golf course, particularly the back nine, that is, could better accommodate just some single-family houses or other types of residential development, that the committee felt that adding an allowance for golf courses to be part of the open space in conservation subdivisions made sense. And in exchange for seeing some residential development, then the golf course and say the wetlands around it or the natural area around it would also need to be preserved. So, it's enabling some residential development and preserving the golf course as some open space. And so, that's what those amendments entail. So, that's another use of the conservation subdivision approach in the community. So, that's, in a nutshell, the highlights of the big picture on the proposed changes. And as I mentioned at the outset, there's Order 1457 is the zoning map amendment. 1458 are the zoning ordinance amendments for the running hill districts and the conservation subdivision standards. And the last order, 1459, are some adjustments to the plumbing ordinance to allow in the running hill districts if there is going to be two-family or multifamily development that isn't served by sewer, that they can utilize a shared septic system, which has been allowed for in some other areas of town where the town is allowed for that type of housing on, served by septic. So, that's the package before you. And should it be successful at first reading, it would go to the planning board for public hearing as the next step.
Okay, comments from the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Uh, move approval?
Second. Okay, Councilor questions? Councilor Holbrook?
I had a question surrounding, well, two things. The first one is, has there been any neighborhood meetings or outreach to the individual property owners where the changes are taking place? And if so, what kind of feedback were you receiving from them?
One of the neighbors is two seats to tier.
Yeah.
Great question. I should've mentioned that in the presentation. We did have a neighborhood meeting in April. It was at the A-Corner School, kind of close to the neighborhood. It was quite well-attended. I would say there was probably twenty or twenty-five residents, property owners in attendance. And we got some good feedback. I think the primary thing changed after that neighborhood meeting was to look at the buffers from the proposed zone to the RF to make sure they were sufficient so that should any new development happen, it's not crowding the RF zone properties next door. And Councilor Caterina, you can certainly add on to any other feedback that you thought we received.
Uh, Councilor Holbrook, I'm on the Long Range Planning Committee and I am a direct of butter to this. And we did have, I thought, a very successful neighborhood meeting. Folks were pretty interested. They asked some great questions. They had some concerns. We've all had concerns about that area, so what's going to happen to it? Because we are so close to the Payne Road, but yet it's very rural. We want to retain that rural feel in that area. So, I thought people asked some great questions. Dan was very helpful in explaining a lot of it. So, I, it's been thoroughly vetted as far as I'm concerned by the neighbors. Because I've also talked to a couple of them. I'm related to some of them, so.
No, I, I guess, no, sorry. No, that's fine. I guess too, my other question is, where are we in conjunction of, in the lower portion where you're changing to RF on Holmes Road, which was previously B2? And I'm trying to picture that stretch of road in my head and I'm thinking the Speedway. Is that, where is that in correlation to this map?
The Speedway is, let me get out my cursor. If you can see this, I know it's hard. Speedway is over here. So, the Speedway is west and the opposite side of the street in west of where this RF area is proposed. So, what would be across the street from where it's proposed as RF is the Scarborough Auto Parts site.
Okay.
There's also, there's not much there. There's, the town owns a little piece of land and then there's Scarborough Auto Parts and there's the old town transfer station and then Speedway. So, this isn't across from the Speedway, that's down a bit.
Was there any discussion in Long Range, and I'm just remembering some recent, maybe last year or so, changes we did up around the Speedway? Because that was to encourage light industrial?
Right.
So, I'm just wondering how on that segment of Payne Road, turning to RF relates to turning everything else around it a little more industrial?
Right. They did talk a fair amount about that and also participating in this whole process are the owners of the golf course. Because that's the back nine, that's all currently developed is golf course or it's wetland. And so, the committee looked at that a fair amount and felt that, given the existence of the golf course and that there's no intentions of that going away anytime soon as a golf course. And then, other than the golf course, the fact that it's a lot of wetland that's not particularly contiguous or there's not big pieces of upland to do light industrial type development, that you need a lot of space, but there is enough upland to do some, you know, two-family or single-family along the golf course, more of a golf course community that you can add in houses along the fairway and not be, not need large tracts of land. That was the direction the committee went.
There's a question. I have a comment. I have a comment.
Help see the.
Yeah, you know, I think I'm going to spend the next, I guess my comment, I'm going to spend some time, maybe driving through there and just looking a bit. I appreciate what you were saying and I can see absolutely what you're talking about up there. I think I'd like to, you know, I'll support it tonight. But maybe I might not have second reading without a slight change. I know.
Of course.
Yeah. Well, I just, I want to go back to RF, I know has been a nasty little thing that has been used to concur how we build things, that that gets used a lot is to, you know, there's big setbacks, there's high, but I want to point out, it's farming, if you allow it. I can put a piggery and be a pig farm next to your golf course. And I just, I want you to really understand, how does that tie in with my manure pile and my hogs that smell?
Yeah.
Next to your golf course and your light industrial? So, I just question about on, maybe the front piece, that really being the most appropriate zoning for it? So, maybe is that a different zoning? Just on that strip, on that Holmes Road strip, maybe something else is a little more.
Along the front edge of Holmes Road, is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, that something else might be a little more appropriate.
So, you're sort of hope down the line, if there's, if the golf course is no longer any.
Is no longer there and it's gone and what are you really looking at down the line? I can buy it and I can put my pig farm there or my slaughterhouse or my.
I know, I'm a. I know one of the intentions or possible future intentions of the golf course is to put some housing in there, which will be allowed under the RF. It gives them some flexibility because they, by the amendments that we've introduced here, it gives them some upland to count towards that acreage requirement in the RF. As someone who, well, being in real estate and also wanting to maintain as much as we can, I'd like, I'd like to see the golf course stay there myself as long as possible. I think allowing the owners of the golf course to do a small development down there, like, well, I'll say Doomgrass, for example, is a place where they've done some, you know, condos and whatnot. It's a lifestyle that a lot of people like. That was the intent there with doing the RF. So, that's what we were thinking to help preserve the rural nature of that back nine for.
Just to add on, one thing we can provide before public hearing or second reading is we can get more information on the wetland mapping. Because that was also talked about a lot is that area is pretty wet, particularly even along Holmes Road. So, it may not be conducive to sort of light industrial, but we can look at that further to see if, you know, there is enough upland to make that a good zoning choice or if it's probably not going to be developed regardless. You know, it might just be a road to get back to maybe some houses along the golf course and that might stay undeveloped along Holmes.
I guess the only hot burn I have is multifamily dwellings limited to no more than twelve, talking Multiplex dwellings, townhouses. I don't know, I kind of like the single-family house outlook on it, but we'll see as we move forward. And when you talk about cluster housing and you were saying with shared septic, now is that, did they do that up by, the new development up by Beetred Speedway with all the multi-houses in there?
Those are single-family houses and they are on enough acreage to have their own septic system. So, the town hasn't seen a lot of, say, duplexes on a shared septic. The areas we've allowed it in town is the North Scarborough area around, you know, Route 22 and 114 so that there can be a duplex. But you need larger acreage. You need, you need an acre of land to have adequate area for leach fields and such. So, it's not high density, you know? It's an acre or two lot size and then.
Yeah. I know the soil conditions have to be right and such, but, you know, I, when I go by, I look at that and I see them all both on both sides of the road. And if they've each got their own septic and they've each got their own well right in the line, I just wonder about groundwater contamination being that clustered, not on sewer.
Right.
I'm sure some, an engineer's figured out and said it's okay, but.
Yeah, you need a hundred feet between your each bed and your well.
Oh, yeah. I think that's it for comments and questions for me. Well, it's okay. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number 1458 is, the first reading referred to planning board, the proposed amendment to chapter 405, the town of Scarborough zoning ordinance to make updates to the RH, the RH two districts and the conservation subdivision design standards.
Okay, anybody from the public like to speak on this order? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second. Discussion.
Is there any? I think we've discussed it.
No, I just don't want there to be any additional discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Order number 1459 is the first reading and scheduled a public hearing for the proposed amendment to chapter 404A, the town of Scarborough plumbing ordinance.
Okay, I suppose I should have Dan explain this one first.
This is the septic one. This one we just discussed in terms of allowing shared septic systems in specific zones.
Okay, anyone like, anyone like to speak to this order? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move through.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. Opposed?
I just, yeah, well, you know, I know you're ready. We're going for it. I just thought this was a part of it that I do like is the concept of being able to share a septic. I know that's been an ongoing problem, especially in the RF zones as you get west, that, you know, somebody that would potentially like to maybe build a duplex, which is a more, you know, affordable, smaller space for people. And you wind up having to, by default, build two full septic systems that it gets expensive quick. So, I am kind of interested and glad to see, you know, some wiggle room in some of our design standards, you know, coming into play, so.
Yeah, and, but the, let me get back to where I was in question. We'll say, for an example, multifamily dwelling, twelve units, that'd be on a shared septic?
No, it's, the way it's structured in the amendments to plumbing code is you can't have more than four units per building on the same septic. So, there wouldn't be the allowance to go to twelve units per building unless the area was served by sewer. So, this isn't opening the door for large apartment buildings or large multifamily to be served by a common septic, but more modest scenarios where there's a two to four unit building could be shared.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Council Benedict?
I'm licensed in Massachusetts, not in Maine, and I think Dan will have an answer to this. When you put in cluster septics, doesn't the state get to overwrite whatever we think is possible as far as how many gallons and size and the, there's got to be, there's got to be room for a second if the thing fails? Because one of the biggest problems in Massachusetts was the houses that were built in the 50s and 60s. They had their septic and then the footage that they decided they wanted to be was supposed to be part of the building plan. But when it came to be the 90s and we're going to fix a septic, everything had changed. So, all these things that they thought they were doing so good fell flat on their face because you got to the point that if they had to redo the septic, which was part of the original building agreement, they couldn't use it. And then they ended up, starting with muck jobs, which I know that from putting them in here, that they're still allowable, but your muck jobs get problematic because you basically take it out the whole area and the farmers like it, but their neighbors don't like it. Because it's digging up the whole thing and moving it. I'm just saying, whatever we decide can be overrun by the state, I assume.
Oh, yeah. Our plumbing ordinance needs to be in compliance with the state wastewater standards and in some cases, the town has a stricter plumbing ordinance than the state. That's why we actually have a local plumbing ordinance. A lot of towns just defer to states. So, yeah, it needs to comply with state standards as well as local standards and this language is consistent with that.
Dan, is there, in the state of Maine, is there any history of these multi-four-unit septic systems?
In the state, absolutely. I mean, most of the state communities aren't served by sewer systems like, like the eastern side of Scarborough. So, it's not that common in Scarborough because we have the benefit of the sanitary district and we haven't allowed for a lot of these because we've been focusing multifamily development where it's connected to the sanitary district system. But there's communities throughout the state that don't have.
Oh, okay.
Public systems and have duplexes, have three to four unit buildings on septic.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number 14-60 is act on the request to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Scarborough and the Scarborough Professional Firefighters Association, IASF Local 3894.
Mr. Chairman, council is pleased to counsel the public. Jacqueline Mandrick, HR Director, is here and she can provide a very quick summary that encapsulates the essence of the contract settlement.
Thank you, thank you. I'm pleased to report tonight that we've reached a tentative three-year contract with the firefighter and EMT bargaining unit with the town. The negotiation process was really collaborative with a lot of give and take by both the union and the management teams to balance all of the interests, treating our employees fairly, supporting them in the dangerous and important work that they do, keeping the town's financial interests in mind and as well as the council's goals that we outlined during the budget process. There are three big pieces I just want to briefly touch on today. The cost of living adjustment that the employees will receive and also the changes to the health and the retirement benefits that we offer. So, the COLA increase for July 1st will be 1.9%. That's the first year of the contract. The second and third year of the contracts outline a 2% cost of living increase with a delayed implementation of three months. The retirement plan, we are offering the option for employees to move to a 25-year two-thirds benefit plan. This shifts the cost from the town to the employee. Employees have a one-time option to make that change and then new employees will also be funneled into that plan. And then for the health benefits, we are currently offering two health plans to employees, a POSA and a POSC. We're removing the POSA plan, that's a richer plan that is more expensive for both the town and the employee, and we're offering a higher deductible plan with an incentive for employees to elect to move to that plan. So, those are the three, three major pieces. I think it was, I guess, a really collaborative and cooperative process and I'm pleased that we reached this agreement.
Hey, any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Jac.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
To move?
Second. Okay, discussion. Anyone have any discussion? Council Donovan?
I was very encouraged to hear that it was a very positive environment in which management and the union discussed and compromised and there was a reflection of the important issues that the town has of maintaining fiscal responsibility, but at the same time being fair to our employees. So, that, that report, I think, is well-received.
Yeah, there's some cost savings to the town with the negotiated contract and there's also was some language changes which made for management to better facilitate employee control over a couple of issues. So, everything seemed to work out well. The union representatives worked well with management and it looks like a win-win for both. So, I'll be supporting this action. Anyone else? Council Benedict?
I'll be supporting it also. My two, two important things in any of the business we do is fair and reasonable. And every discussions and listening to them, it looks like there was, nobody came out of it with a black eye. Nobody came out of it with a double-footed Sunday. But they put it together and they could work together so that they met each other somewhere. They could look at somebody and say, hi, how you doing? So, as Bill said, win-win. And considering the year we've had, a win-win is real nice. And no one's going to come out of it with a black eye. That's it.
Anyone else down this end? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number 1461 is act on the request to see if the town of Scarborough will vote to amend its main per service retirement plan for firefighters effective July 1st, 2014.
This order relates directly to the contract settlement. As was alluded to, there's changes to the retirement program and the council, as the governing body, must authorize the change to that retirement plan and that's what this action does.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second. Okay, questions or discussion? Anyone have questions on? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? None.
Order 14-62 is act to certify the results in the June 10, 2014 school budget validation referendum.
Okay, um, do you have anything on that?
Actually, Tody could probably speak to it better than I. This is just for the council ratifying the actual votes on last Tuesday. Is that last Tuesday? Last Tuesday.
We have motion.
Move the question.
Okay, did I hear a second, one please?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Council Benedict?
No, it looks like, like the other thing that they discussed, that you're already happy with it. I'm going to vote for it.
Okay. Anyone up this end? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number 1463 is act on the request to adopt the 2014-2014 school budget resolution as required by state statute.
All right.
I would just mention, this is always kind of a curious vote. I think councilors always kind of scratch their head as to why we're doing this once everything's said and done. It is a state requirement. I assure you, the numbers in front of you have not changed whatsoever and they reflect the will of the voters on June 10.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second. Second, Council Benedict? Discussion. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? On action, I?
None this time.
Yes, none this time. Standing and special committee reports. Council Blais?
I attended the senior advisory board meeting the other day and nothing of significance came out of it. That's it. And I'll let our chairman of the finance committee report on the finance committee.
Council Benedict?
No, we had no meeting. No, we had no meetings in business. How's that?
Hi, thank you. Counselor Caterina?
Yes. Went to the Greater Portland Council Government Assembly, I guess they call it the assembly meeting, and board meeting today. And the Town of Scarborough won an award. I was pretty excited about that. And I'll read it very quickly. It says, "A recognition award presented to the Town of Scarborough for best practices in cost-effective management, strengthened municipal services, and citizen participation. Greater Portland Council of Governments commends the Town of Scarborough, its Town Council, Planning Board, Town Manager, Fire Chief, Planning Director, and the Scarborough Vision Committee, a citizen-based committee formed by the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, and the Scarborough Chamber of Commerce for exemplary collaboration in creating a cross-trained position of commercial code enforcement officer, fire inspector, designed to improve coordination and communication between the fire department, the code enforcement division, and applicants in the development process." And I would like to congratulate everyone. I, being the newbie on board, I didn't have anything to do with it, but I got to shake Ed Soffelvik's hand, so. And Tom got to speak. So, I just wanted to let you know about that. And then I missed the conservation commission meeting, so I don't have anything to report on that. Sorry.
Counselor Donovan?
No, no, did not have any committee meetings.
So, Monday, August fourth, at nine a.m., will be the next finance committee meeting. So, I just wanted to give you two a heads up. I know I said I'd get back to you.
Yes, thank you.
So, what'll happen is, we will not be meeting in July due to some scheduling conflicts, but in August, that will be in replace of our August meeting. So, at that time, what the finance committee will be doing is going over the year-end financial, will be at twelve, about our twelve-month reporting, so we'll have our final numbers as far as municipal and school money spent, places that are overextended, underextended, and so forth. Hopefully, it's all good news. So, while we met, which was Tuesday, last Tuesday, seventeen, we did go over the current financial statements. There's nothing all that exciting to report. We seem to be fairly on target as far as municipal spending. There was a slight thing on the school side where they are a little bit unspent, but they do have their last payment, so I expect that number to balance out a little bit. The other thing is, we did have, for one of our main topics, outside agency allocations. As you may recall, every year, we have a number of, well, of groups that come to us and ask for donations. We did not expand upon that dollar amount that we give to outside agencies. In fact, I don't think we have in three years, coming to mind. We've kept that at a flat level funding. The one change that maybe is somewhat different is, we did have a last, a request that has not come to fruition. They are not asking for their funds, although I'm not entirely sure if they went belly-up or what it was. I believe the amount was seven hundred or so dollars. So, what we proposed as the finance committee was to take seven hundred dollars that would normally be that company's disbursement for the year, and to invest that in our town's fuel assistance program that we do with Project Grace. So, I'm not sure if that needs to be a council action or not, but just keep you up to speed. So, we have historic preservation. They'll be meeting August fifth at six thirty. Again, there'll be no meeting in July. They continue to work on site work, so they're currently walking around looking at cemetery, sorry, cemeteries and doing site visits and cataloging and trying to find. We have a lot of cemeteries in town, so it's a bit of a daunting task, so I think I'm kindly for doing it. We'll also be talking about the outreach effort. There is a prepared letter, I believe, at this point. If it's not prepared, it's about to be finished, that we plan, that group plans on historic preservation is going to mail to the individual property owners out of the list that we're looking at. So, the list that's being generated for council approval, we'd like to meet with those property owners prior to coming to council. That way, to get some feedback from them as far as what are maybe some property owner concerns, what are maybe some ideas that they might have to help them to keep it and to encourage them to maintain it in its wonderful, perfect state. Also, appointments did meet this evening. There are some names to post. All of them are to the senior program advisory board. We have Philip Christie, Troy Hendrickson, and Susan Wilder. I do want to take a moment just to encourage anybody that has any interest in serving on some of our committees. We do have many, many, many vacancies on many, many, many committees, and we could greatly appreciate any effort or help from the community. So, we do have some openings on the board of assessment review. We have openings on the coastal water and harbor committee. We have community services and recreation advisory board. We have openings on conservation commission. We do still have openings on historic preservation, the housing alliance, as well as pest management advisory committee, and the senior program advisory board still has one opening. And that's it for committee reports.
Thank you. The one committee report I have to report on is K-9 education and enforcement committee. Met last night and had an organizational meeting, and it went very well. Everybody seemed happy to be there and willing to go to town, working on the certain criteria that we put forth for them to look into. I see a lot of enthusiasm, and I think they'll work well together. So, and Counselor St. Clair is going to be the liaison to that committee. So, with that, we'll go to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought I'd take a brief moment and perhaps update certainly the council and those at home. I previously mentioned that we recently met earlier this month with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as part of our ongoing effort to stay in touch with them. They've not got back to us in terms of how we fare as regards the settlement agreement and the fine amount, but all of these conversations we're having help inform their understanding of our efforts and our ongoing efforts. And so, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I'd like to just tick off a number of things that we've accomplished in a short time. And I kind of couch these under something called plubber awareness and protection initiatives. This is a document I did send to them, so they have this to refer to. Just very quickly, we've developed two different educational materials pamphlets that are provided at any number of locations, certainly at the town clerk's office, but they're actually in volunteers' hands and on the beach, and those are being handed out by the thousands at this point. We've done a fair degree of outreach, and certainly can do more, but there's been a Facebook page created which has helped connect with some people and connect them to each other. As you're aware, there's some staff enhancements. We have a full-time, not a full-time, but a seasonal beach monitoring coordinator who is, whose chief responsibility is to coordinate all the monitoring programs. And Ryan Winn, whom I think appeared here one evening and introduced himself, has done a great job of really stepping into that role quickly. Again, with the blessing of council, we have some enhanced law enforcement through our reserve officer program, and Officer Giacometonio is providing great assistance for us at the beach areas. And the other reserve officers have been hired as well. We've done our training that involves Maine Audubon, and that's been directly with public works, reserve, and community services staff. Those folks that are on the beach on a frequent basis have all received the best training that we have available. There is a volunteer monitoring program that's been established. As of two weeks ago, there were thirty committed folks, and I think that's grown since. And part of our challenge now, there are chicks present on two beaches that I'm aware of, on Higgins Beach and Pine Point. Our goal is to have volunteers in place during those critical morning hours, sunrise to nine. And so, that's seven days a week for the next forty, forty-five days or so. So, that's quite a commitment, but we think it's a real important part of us honoring the spirit of the ordinance and providing the best protections we can. Signage has been replaced through town at the beach areas. I mentioned we're still evolving with this chick protection plan. Honestly, with these chicks mobile on the beach, the things have changed. It was easy enough to locate the nest and see that the eggs were still in it. Now that they're mobile on the beach, it's a different dynamic that we're trying to manage with. Enforcement, we've been very active, and actually citations have been written for infractions in the beach areas, a number of operational changes regarding our beach cleaning activities, trash receptacles and collection practices. We continue to interface with our partner agencies at the state and federal level. And as the chairman mentioned, there's a K-9 education enforcement committee that's just getting up and running, and they are tasked with doing some pretty important stuff that will, I think, dovetail nicely with many of the efforts I just provided an overview on. And again, if I could just accentuate that point, to just be hyper vigilant with the chicks on the beach, particularly in those unrestricted areas, if people choose to have their dogs off-leash, they really need to be aware that things can happen very, very quickly. And I personally would encourage people to, when they approach those areas, perhaps put them on a leash just to be absolutely safe. But I just issue that plea or that warning. Also, I want to mention the flood maps that have been talked about for better part of three years. We just received word today that the appeals period will be delayed further, and I think for good reason. They've actually convened a third party, they call it a scientific review panel, that is evaluating FEMA and their consultants' basic methodology, which is a point that we've questioned right along. One of the great things for us is the consultant that's assisted us is the one that's responsible for this, for many of the questions that are being asked and explored elsewhere in Region One. So, there'll be a further delay. I don't have an idea of timeline, but it's certainly months at this point. And I did attend with Counselor Caterina a tour of Wetworth School this week, Monday evening. The building committee had what might be their last meeting, I don't know, in the library at the old school, and we all took a tour of the new school. I think you'll see activities pick up very quickly. They're doing, they're moving out the final products, and you'll see demolition occur within a week or ten days, and I think it'll go fairly swiftly, frankly. And lastly, a quick project update. Higgins Parkway repaving is being done as we speak, so be aware. It's certainly passable, but there may be some delays. Pike is the contractor for DOT. They will be moving and doing portions of Payne Road immediately after that, so that area of town is going to be busy for the next couple of weeks. Our Pleasant Hill Road reconstruction project is going, is fully in motion at this point. I haven't received any complaints. I think there are some challenges with traffic in the area, but we have reader boards, and we do require that they maintain at least one lane of travel at all times. So, so far, so good. The project's going on as scheduled. And lastly, we did open bids for a set of intersection improvements, really pedestrian improvements, down here at the intersections of Quorum Road, Hanaford Drive, and Wetworth Drive. This is part of the Oak Hill pedestrian plan, and a piece that we really negotiated with the school project in exchange for our assistance on wetland mitigation. Some members of council might remember that. So, we've opened bids. I think we need to revisit some of them. The bids came in a little higher than budget, but I think we can massage that back into a workable program. All of those improvements are scheduled to be done this summer, and so they'll be operational and functional for the kids when they come back in September. So, with that, I'm certainly available for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Counselor Holber?
Yeah. So, no, I just had one, just a friendly reminder. As you know, Fourth of July is rounding the corner. Of course, we don't meet the first first week in July. So, just a friendly reminder with the way our fireworks ordinance is written, certain days, depending on how the dates fall. So, for this year, for the folks at home, Thursday, the third, yes, fireworks are legal, but only until ten p.m. And then Friday, it's the regular until twelve-thirty p.m., which is the fourth, and then it should be as well on Saturday. So, but Thursday is ten. Ten is the cutoff. So, other than that, have a happy, wonderful day, Fourth of July.
Counselor Donovan?
Well, we are, we're six weeks since we passed the ordinance provisions related to the protection of plovers and control of dogs, and it's been a tremendously active period, as our town manager was describing, and a great start in many, probably the most important respect is, there's more plovers than people can ever remember being on our beaches. Pine Point, Margot Hodgkins keeps giving me reports and says it's remarkable for the number of plovers and chicks on Pine Point. It creates challenges, but it's exciting because it's a worthwhile effort on the town's behalf to successfully implement this program. We have a plover coordinator who has organized volunteer groups at each beach. I volunteer at Higgins Beach, and I put in for a stint at Pine Point just to see what's going on. Gives me a sense to be able to report to all of you of how things are going. And I will tell you that the Scarborough residents have been very compliant. It's been great to see because we have a full team headed by Gunner Shabat, doing a great job out at Higgins Beach. And there have been quite a few people who have been non-compliant, but they're mostly out-of-town people. And so, there's an education process that's been going on, and it's pretty interesting that I think it's been effective, and that the residents of the Town of Scarborough have been aware of what the rules are and complying with them. So, that's what was good to see. The coordinator has also done a great job with signage and with educational materials in the short time that he had available to put that together. It was a lot of good collaborative work. We've also learned a lot about what our signage deficiencies are. And so, it's been a constant process to develop the signage that's necessary so that people actually are properly informed. So, that's been, that's been great. I will say that if people want to take a walk down to the Spurwink River at Higgins Beach, it's just, there are monitors in the morning and in the evening almost every hour, and so they're aware of where the plovers are. And a lot of people have enjoyed saying, "I've never seen one, and do they really exist?" And we can show you, the monitors are aware of them, we can kind of point them out, and it's exciting to kind of see an endangered species that's kind of just making his way along the beach with these little chicks that are no more than the size of a cotton ball. So, that's, it's remarkable that they survive, totally remarkable. The, I wanted to comment on the approval of the budget. You know, balancing the interests of school supporters and people who are looking for greater fiscal responsibility in our budgeting and tax impact is a hard task. It's one that we grappled with, and we came together and we made a decision. And the vote, I think, shows that the town is fairly evenly split. Both votes were very, very close. The two highs, two lows, just right, they came out very, very close. And I think when no one is really thrilled with the outcome, perhaps we fairly balanced those interests. So, I do think that the feedback I'm getting is begrudging acceptance that it was probably about the right spot. School people not very happy, people who wanted to see a greater restraint, but I think it was unrealistic under the circumstances that we were presented with. So, that was, that was good. So, thank you.
Counselor Caterina?
Yeah, actually, I'll spin off from what you were just talking about. I had my open office hour, and school board member, Finance Chair Chris Caiasso, sat with me. Regressively, we didn't have any public, but that's okay. I was there if anyone wanted to come in. But we spent an hour chatting, the two of us, and I am very hopeful that we can have some sort of a working group. I know I've been talking to Chairman Sullivan about this, where the school board and the town-
town council are talking earlier about, you know, what are the goals of each and how we can try to avoid this split. Because there is a natural split in this town. I always said it's the tale of two Scarboroughs. The younger people and the families, and then those who've been here for a long time or are on fixed incomes or whatever, and so there's this tension that goes on that I'd like to see mitigated to some degree so that we can move forward and not have such contentious discussions and votes and revotes and everything else, if we can avoid that. That being said, I did go to see Wentworth School, as Manager Hall mentioned. It's a beautiful building, and I, having been an educator myself, it's enough to make me think, geez, I wouldn't mind going back teaching a building like that. And it should last us for many, many years to come, the way it's been designed. It's got built-in growth, you know, for the growth of town if town grows more. I thought it was very well planned and done. And then the last thing is, my neighbors, the Huff's, they had some input on long-range planning, and I just wanted to wish them a happy 40, 50 anniversary. They were going to come tonight, but they were on cruise for their 40, 50 anniversary, so I just wanted to congratulate them on that. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Benedict.
The only thing that I have, and I don't know how to follow it up, we spent good money in putting blinking signs on the Pine Point Road by the bridge, and then again on Blackpoint Road by the Eastern Trail. And I witnessed something that scared the living daylights out of me. Last Sunday, there was a woman with three kids, two in a double stroller, however you say it. She stood and waited for the lights. And there's one of my daughters, and I think, "What are these?" So, I explained what it was. And I watched this woman, following directions, stepped off the curb. The minute she stepped off the curb, the lights stopped. That was a pretty horrifying thing because she was doing everything right. And the safety aspect of the thing, and then I watched it happen again. They pulled over the side of the road, by U.S. Street. Can I say, I just, I couldn't see what happens here. This is ridiculous. And especially with the summer coming on, a lot of people outside. Can't afford to have it that way. It needs to be fixed, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
How's that? Counselor Blais.
Well, I'd just like to say that absolutely delighted that we approved the purchase of the Benjamin Farm. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the, to the town and to everyone who lives in the town and to neighboring communities. And I want to thank you all for voting for it.
Thank you. I also, actually, for years and years and years, being on the council, I've heard questions over and over again, "What about the Benjamin property? What about the Benjamin property?" Well, I'm glad to say I won't have to hear that again. So, it's a done deal. And I, you know, I think, you know, I truly believe that that was a perfect purchase with the money set aside for purchases of land trust property, or property for the citizens of Scarborough to enjoy. That being said, I'd like to thank the 30-plus beach volunteers, plover lovers and dogs group alike for volunteering their time to help make sure the plovers and the plover chicks stay safe. The, as far as the Wentworth tour, I was unable to attend because of the circumstances that I'm under with a wife with a broken ankle and two children to watch and take care of. So, that's keeping me busy, plus work. And I wanted to mention during, during the budget hearing, I heard people talk of sidewalks to know wheres, and as I travel in town, a lot of times, I pay attention to the sidewalks, and I've seen a lot of people using the sidewalks on the Dunston side of town, and I've seen a lot of people using them on the Oak Hill side of town. And I see more people now recreating down to the eastern than I ever have because it's safe now. And as far as the crossing lights, I don't know how they're working right now, but when they first were installed, the, since they've been installed, I have seen people slam their brakes on to stop people in the crosswalk now. So, I think that has been a great improvement over what I've seen in the past. It angered me with children waiting in the crosswalk. No one would stop. They keep going by and by and by and by. And the VIPs were down on the eastern one day counting how many cars in a short period of time went, would not stop for people, and it was mind-blowing how many people did not stop for people in the crosswalk. So, I think we've actually made it safer for people crossing on the Eastern Trail. Get the glitches out, and I think we'll be fine. And I can't wait till they introduce one down by the Wentworth. That's another contention of mine. It has been for a long time, I've down there seen children driving across, and nobody would stop. And I'm just like, I'm beside myself. So, I guess this is what it takes in this town to get people to stop pedestrians, is strobe lights. So, with that being said, I, oh, one other thing I wanted to touch on was, yep, one other thing I wanted to touch on was what Counselor Donovan said. With the town being split, it definitely is split. You look at the emails that we received over the period that we were debating the budget, and it's pretty much 50/50, and they're both furious with us. So, it's in a no-win situation. If you lower the tax rate on the schools too much, all the parents are mad at you, and if you don't, you know, if you lower too much, they're mad at you. And if you increase it too much, then you've got the taxpayers angry with you. So, it's a, it's a tough job, and come do it. See how he's there. And we all received letters, and I think Counselor Donovan would like to comment on it.
We all got letters, personal letters from kids in the school system. This is the K-Kids, part of a Kiwanis program, and they all wrote us saying, "Thank you for your good efforts," and they're excited about the new school, the new Wentworth School. And I just think it was a very kind gesture.
Yes, it was.
Really appreciated the letter from someone I actually know lives in my neighborhood. Yeah, young lady, so.
Okay, with that being said, the motion for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Set.